Wasn't just haphazardly done. It wasn't just a group of people getting together and taking care of business. It didn't happen that way. It happened that way because we chose inaction. It's hard to get things through this council when I was there. I know that's probably a surprise. But because of that, and now I'm thankful for it because it forced us then to have to bring this stormwater utility online. And I'm going to tell you, even though I did not know what we were getting into, as it's turned out, it's been one of the absolute best things to happen in this community as far as addressing flooding issues. Is it perfect? No, there's still work to be done. And there may always be work to be done. Make no mistake about it, because here's what I know, and I can proclaim this. If the good Lord wants it to rain hard enough and fast enough, any system in the country is hard pressed to handle it. If it floods, it floods. There's nothing we can do. You can't stop it. We don't have control over it. But I would ask everybody involved in this process to please, if you have ideas or you have suggestions, please come together with the utility and let's sit down and have calm conversation with common sense solution. God bless you. God bless Hopkinsville and Christian County.
Extra good.
Thank you, Rich.
Dan Kemp, 601 Huraway. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to thank you for your leadership of our city. Having served on the city council myself at one time and having served as mayor of Hopkinsville, I'm aware of how difficult it can be sometimes to make decisions that are in the public interest. So I want to thank you for your service. I'm here tonight to speak about the Hopkinsville Stormwater Utility, which was created by city council in 2005. As I've said publicly, I believe the utility has done a remarkable job over the past almost 20 years, reducing the flood risk in Hopkinsville by creating detention basins, enlarging the waterway where the South Fork of the Little River goes under the bypass, cleaning out log jams from the river, managing the lakes north of Hopkinsville to control the North Fork of Little River, using federal grants to purchase homes in flood prone areas, creating a stormwater management plan, as well as many other efforts to better manage stormwater. I feel sure that Hopkinsville is much better off today than it was before the utility was created almost 20 years ago. It's my understanding that some members of the council are considering essentially repealing the ordinance which created the stormwater utility and turning all of those responsibilities over to the City Public Works Department. I believe that would be a mistake, and I urge you not to do that. Any perceived issues with stormwater management can be adequately addressed through the utility board and staff. I urge you to get legal advice before taking any action. I don't know if the fees set in the enabling ordinance can be redirected to the City Public Works Department since these fees were created to fund the stormwater utility. On a practical level, I think Mike Perry and Public Works already have a full plate and don't need to take on the additional responsibilities of the stormwater utility. So I am asking to please slow down, think carefully about all the ramifications and consequences before making any changes. This would be a major change in the operation of the city, and it needs to be studied very thoroughly and very carefully before any change is made. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Rita Brown. I live at 4020 Single Tree Drive. And I guess I'm following two people that know a whole lot more about how this group was formed and how it is supposed to perform than I do. But I know that we have issues in our neighborhood, Single Tree. We have contacted stormwater numerous times, and nobody does anything. My brother in law and sister in law live right next to the drainage ditch, and they're to the point where they're trying to figure out if they're going to have to get a contractor coming clean out where all the water now is starting to back up. So I guess I'm disappointed that stormwater is not more of a proactive. And then, second, and the big reason why I took time to come here tonight, and in full disclosure, that young lady sitting over there is my granddaughter. And I have watched her suffer for the last few weeks since her home flooded. When she's not in a flood zone, I've watched my great grandchildren's little hearts be broken because they've had to leave their home. And I have felt like that there are awfully a lot of people that are looking for someone to blame instead of trying to help. And my question is, not just for her, but for everybody else that this happens to. And there's several other people in her neighborhood that are struggling. And nobody is reaching out and telling them where they can get help. She has been calling to tell them because she has had the issues for the last five months, not to the extent that happened on June 28th. But shame on us for not having a system that helps the citizens of Hopkinsville when they are backed up against a wall and nobody coming to help. So whatever needs to happen to make this group more proactive for our citizens. I know one of the cases is a lady who's taking care of her disabled mom. And now she has mow and mildew in her basement. And how is she going to keep taking care of a mother while she's trying to take care of that? Nobody except for Brandy has reached out to her to tell her who she can reach to to get help. So there is something very wrong when we're more concerned about which department and who might have been responsible for what happened instead of taking care of our citizens.
Any more want to speak at public comments? Or still open? Right? Seeing none, we'll move into mayor's comments on that. We had a good weekend. We had the disabled veterans. We had a good picnic with them on Saturday, and they were very happy. And we had a lot of good conversations with the veterans. We had the dirt bowl over at Walnut Street there at the Boys and Girls Club. Jason Bell and them were all out there, and Brittany, they were all there, having a good time with the young people and having a good turnout. Mother Nature didn't work out as well as we wanted them to on Sunday. But August the 8th, if I'm correct, Councilman Bell, is we're going to try to do that again to finish it up. Okay? All righty, August the 8th, back at the Boys and Girls Club, if the good Lord gives us good weather. Also like to say thank you to Chief Newby Marful and Brittany Byram and Brittany Bogard for the human trafficking training they did last night here at City Hall. We'd like to say thank you for that. Also had a great time at Saturday night at the Back to Back Foundation with Bryce Long and his fundraiser for the community and the needy here in town. We had a full house there and hope everybody comes out and enjoys everything else that's going on. Go to our webpage for everything that's happening right now. Okay? And we'll move in from that to reports from officers and guest speakers. And that's going straight into stormwater with Steve Born, Bill Nichols, and Mike Perry.
All right, I'd like to speak just for a few minutes since Public Works has kind of got put in the mix of talking about bringing stormwater under Public Works. Steve and I, of course, we work closely together. We meet once a month, kind of discuss issues going out through the city and all, forest flooding and so forth. The way the system works is Public Works is usually responsible for anything inside the right of way. Stormwater is responsible for anything outside the right of way. Of course, there's our issue sometimes when we can't do anything inside the right of way because if you don't fix what's outside the right of way for the water to go, somewhere for the water to go, it's an issue. So Steve and I work close together with that. This year has been an anomaly year. It's been a crazy year where it's 60 inches for the year already. That's we're above our average, annual average of rainfall already. And so at this time, for six months of the year, our average, 30 year average is 30 inches of rain, where it's all 60 inches of rain for the year. So when you get the ground saturated like it is, you get three historical rain events, 100 year floods, 500 year flood, and 1,000 year flood. Our systems can't take that kind of rain. Our systems now in the city, which is standard across the United States, most cities is your storm sewer is going to take about inch, inch and a half of rain per hour. And that's not in 10 minutes. That's average over an hour. So there is a lot of things that still needs to be done. And Steve and I have been discussing a lot of things in the past. I appreciate the stormwater. For us, it's been around for 20 plus years. We kind of know how much work has already been done. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done. There's no doubt about it. It's the question is how much money you want to throw at it? You know, that is something we got to look at because, but we can't, as far as going through the city and changing all the infrastructure, you're talking about probably billions of dollars before it's all said and done. If you're talking about changing the whole infrastructure. Every driveway in town is supposed to have at least a minimum of 15 inch tile underneath the driveway, which is rated at 100 year flood event. We all know when you get four inches of rain in 45 minutes to an hour, there is no system that's going to carry that kind of rain. We did fairly well when we had the 14 to 15 inches of rain, but it was over a four day period, and we didn't get all that rain at one time. It was a very slow, you know, it rained for a little bit. It kind of receded, then it rained again. But when you get these heavy downpours, and we all know our weather system is changing, it's across the country. You look, if you read the news every day, there's flooding in every neighborhood. Oh, not every neighborhood, but almost every city at some point in time, if somebody's, you know, receiving a flood and flash flood. And it's going to happen. And Rich Levy is right, you know, mother nature is going to do what it does. You know, we can't control mother nature. But we can look at the systems and try to make it better. And I think that Steve Born and him and I having discussions, they're willing to look at all that. You know, and they do that on a regular basis, but we probably haven't got down into the weeds way it needs to be done as far as some systems on the outside of the right of way, some areas that need to be cleaned on a regular basis. And Steve and I have had them conversations. And so I think that is something that, you know, Steve will talk about here in a minute in his report. But I did want to speak on that just a little bit since Public Works has been brought into this conversation. I do not have the staff to take it on. If we tuck it on, you're talking about adding a stormwater manager, and we're talking about adding probably anywhere from three to four more staff members now to help keep things as far as the maintenance side of it. So you can put a dollar figure to that. That's fine, but I think we don't need to jump into anything until we do a complete plan and look at everything because that's where you make mistakes. You know, and it's like I told the mayor, when Steve Born retired from CDS and they didn't know what was going to happen with stormwater at that time, who was going to take it over or who's going to manage it? And I told the mayor, I said, if you need to bring it on me, bring it on to Public Works. But you know, it's kind of jokingly and seriously at the same time. But it takes a lot to do what they do. Now, I understand people are frustrated, and I hate it when people get, you know, are flood victims. I mean, it happens, and it's unfortunate, it does happen. But we also have an issue with public not keeping their properties clean and keeping trash and so forth. When you get flash flood, it washes from people's yards, properties, and goes to the drains and clogs them up. That is a big problem that we have. And so we've been pushing some stuff out now through social media, trying to get people more focused on that. But it takes everybody to make a difference. And there are areas outside the right of way that are drainage, but it's also the property's responsibility to keep that maintained also. It's not just Public Works, it's not stormwater, it's everybody's responsibility. So we need to push that message out too, just to make sure everybody understands. You know, we're not, nobody's pointing fingers, nobody's trying to figure out who to blame. It's just one of the things that we all got to come together and work together to make a difference.
I had a question, Mike. One of the recommendations I made to the mayor was you all, when I say you all, stormwater being on the codes department notification system. Now I saw a couple of emails. Is that done? So if I have a stormwater issue that I want to report, can I do that today?
No, you cannot do that today. It's like, well, we do have what we call JAP form out there. You can report to us any drainage issue. And if it's anything that's concerned outside the right of way, we push that notification on to stormwater.
But I'm talking about with
But it's called, you're talking about codes.
With the codes.
Yes. No, that is not, that's not
Okay, so that has not been implemented. That needs to be implemented because I think that's a good way for the public, when they see small things. You ride around every day, you're not going to see all the small things. But if it's in my front yard, I'm going to see it every day. And if I can do a little note, you know it, you track it. It's important enough to go fix.
All right, any other questions for me? If not, I'm going to turn it over to Steve and let him speak for a few minutes.
Good evening. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about this. It is a very sensitive issue and an issue that we want to be really responsive to, and I want to emphasize that. There is a variety, a tremendous variety of things out there in the community that we need to address and we need to go after and try to fix. But it takes time, it takes efforts. And so tonight, I'm going to try to go through some of this stuff for and outline what we're doing and how we're going to try to take a proactive, and I think we have been proactive, approach to some of these issues. So we can make a, again, a presentation for tonight. As you all know, and since the information I have given to you, we've had three significant events over the last couple of months. And all you have to do is listen to the news. It's everywhere. It's just not here, we're just not special. It's been everywhere, and it's a lot of water. And again, I use a little bit of a different terminology. It's like pouring a 10 gallon bucket into a five gallon bucket. It just doesn't work. And that's what we have done. We have a system that's made up of a lot of five gallon buckets, and we're getting a lot of 10 gallon rains. So as we go through this, I also want to emphasize what Mike has said. We do work well together. We try to coordinate with Public Works. We're not leaving them out of the equation. There are issues that when we get to, we have to work together because some are in the right of way, some are outside. And we try to make sure that we're spending the money that has been allocated to us in the most efficient, effective way possible. And I, as we go through this, I don't want to seem like we're being pitted against Public Works. This is not, these are not problems that we need to start pitting folks against in order to try to see if we can get things done. These are problems that we need to work together and emphasize that more than the process of either us or them. So again, as we move through this, I want to make sure you understand we have a great working relationship with Public Works. We are continuing that process. And once you know that's, that's not one of the problems that we're facing at this particular point in time. We were, if you'll change the slide again, we were looking at putting a flood control facility on the South Fork. As we talked about in June, that particular project did not meet cost benefit. It did not affect enough of the drainage elevations for us to think that was worthy to go on. That was a sad statement, but what it did allow us to do is take that money and address it on some of these issues that we're facing right now. And as we're going through this, we have about 6.6 million. And now that's 6 million. We are adjusting, we're estimating about five, about 1 million to river clean out the log jams. And we're looking at about a $500,000 commitment on each fork, the north and south. The residential buyouts, we're looking at 3.1. Now, we also received some grant money. But I will tell you, as going through the implementation of those grants, which is about 15 buyouts, we are currently a million dollars over what that grant money was providing for us to address. So we're $1 million over. So we're going to use some of that money to cover that cost. Secondly, we also looking at a local buyout. We have two options like we talked about at the last meeting. One option is to wait till the grant money comes available and use this buyout money that we're listing here as match for that particular, particular process. But the grant money that we're currently spending, we started that process in 2016, 2017. So you're looking at a pretty lengthy amount of time in order to get that money from the federal government. So what we're looking at is a local buyout. We currently have told people who flooded in April to come see us if they want to be put on a voluntary buyout list. We started one, and we currently have 20 structures, 20 people who want to participate in this flood buyout if we do it on a local basis. But I will tell you, after you take a billion dollars off of that and you go to 2.1 billion, you're looking at probably in a neighborhood of eight to 10 structures that you can buy out, depending upon how much those structures are appraised. So again, 3.1 for a buyout program to address some of these issues. Then we looked at our watershed lakes, which are an important flood control facility on the North Fork. The state comes down and monitors us every year. That monitoring affects our insurance premium rates. The insurance company looks at that rating that the state gives us and says, good, fair, poor. We're in the fair range. So we decided to take a harder look at these. We've asked an engineering firm to look at that. They came up with a preliminary study to address what the state has requested, and that cost was around $800,000 on all, on all four lakes to address the problems that the state is basically pointing out to us. In the meantime, after that study was completed, we had the April rain event that basically blew out, and we'll show you pictures of that later, blew out three of the four auxiliary emergency spillways on those lakes. Based on some estimated costs we have currently, it's almost $750,000 to repair those auxiliary emergency spillways. So now you're looking at about another $2 million to go towards those particular lakes. And if you do not do that, the problem is you may have some issues down the road with respect to continued erosion. And then if those lakes breach in any way, then you have a big mess on your hands because your insurance companies will not cover the cost of those particular structures. We're also looking at some floodproofing programs for people who have issues that may get up around their foundation or underneath their homes. And then, as we talk about looking forward, we're putting some money in towards engineering, our grant matching. We're going to take every advantage as we've had in the past to get as much grant money as we possibly can in this community. The ERU amounts that we have, which is $3 per ERU, only goes a certain distance. And we've gotten over $13 million over the last 20 years to augment the ERU amount that currently we are receiving. So we're looking at grant match possibly, but engineering, we'll get into a little bit more of that as I talk about looking forward. One of the things I've heard is we're not being proactive enough. And I want to emphasize that we want to do some things, and we are doing some things that I think are counter to that argument that we're not being proactive. The first is, again, we want to coordinate and work with Public Works. They are partners in this. The city of Hopkinsville is partners. Everyone is partners in making sure we have an effective drainage system. One of the other things we talked about is possibly looking at warning systems attached to our rain and flood gauges. Last time I was up here, I talked about the fact that we have a relationship with the USGS, United States Geological Service, that we've had rain and flood gauges on both the North and South Forks. And they are tied into the Paducah National Weather Station in Paducah, excuse me. All we want to do now is look at possibly upgrading those and having some type of advanced warning system. We also want to look at a comprehensive review of our, our local roadway drainage system. There are some areas that we need to focus on, and we need to know where those areas are. And looking at it from a comprehensive perspective is the best way to go. Another thing that we are seeing is that sometimes you just can't see under the ground, and sometimes you just can't see through the pipe to see what you have. So the best way you do that is have some type of camera system. And those camera systems are expensive, but we're looking at possibly buying a camera system that will be utilized by Public Works that we can go into these pipes and see basically what we have and how we can address those particular situations. One of the other aspects of we're looking at is we have a lot of creeks, and we have a lot of ditches that run through this community that are not on easements. And we are bound by the same requirements that you all are, is we can't do work on private property. We cannot spend tax dollars. We cannot spend fee generated dollars on private property. But those things provide a very important part of our drainage system. So we're looking at possibly some enforcement activities that will clean out some of these ditches that have grown up, these creeks that have grown up. And we're also going to look at, from an engineering perspective, the cost of going in there and cleaning these out ourselves and taking it upon ourselves to look at trying to open these things up to get the water out of town. And then finally, there has been some discussion that the standard that we utilize in designing flood control system is based on the 100 year storm event. And that is anywhere from 4.2 inches in a three hour period or 6.5 inches in a 24 hour period. It runs the gamut. But when you're putting these systems into old subdivisions to try to retroactively fit them in there, sometimes it's hard to do, and sometimes it's hard or difficult to get a 100, 100 year storm system in those areas. But if we are receiving more floods as a result of the weather patterns that are shifting, not only here, but nationally, if you want to look at increasing the design standard to a 200 or 500 year event, that's fine. But there is a cost associated with that. The larger the pipes you put in the ground, the larger the ditch you build, the more money it's going to cost. So what we're looking at is possibly seeing what those costs are. If you're going to have, make these type of decisions, you need to know what those costs are when you make those decisions. And, and when you make those decisions, it's going to require a funding source. And that funding source that you currently have is that ERU, that $3 ERU. So you'll change it to responsibilities. When we were first created, we went over this last time. There were some responsibilities that were given to us. Flooding on the north, major drainage problems, remedial, which are smaller drainage problems, an unfunded federal mandate, stormwater phase two, the NFIP program, the community rating program, which we participate in, provides a 15% reduction in insurance premiums in the city. We also spend, the council, city shifted the regulatory cost of enforcement of the stormwater management plans over to us, and we're paying that at this particular point in time. And as you see, $3 ERU adopted in 2006 generates about $1.3 million. It's about 465,000 ERUs. Go ahead and change. Perpetual maintenance, we've built 11 stormwater basins that require mowing, that requires maintenance in terms of the discharge facilities. You'd be surprised how many trees fall on our fence that we have to repair on a yearly basis. 109 lots we mow, 109 structures didn't flood because we bought them out. It's 53 acres. The four watershed dams, we mow them on a quarterly basis, which we have to. The four watershed dams, we mow them on a quarterly basis, which we have to. State gets on us because we have critter holes in the dam. So we go out and we try to fill up those critter holes. And we try to make sure we keep the tree line away from the, the dam so that we don't have the root system eroding these earth and burns. The flood gauges, we have to maintain them through the USGS. And then it's a constant battle with log jams, and we'll show you some of those. As we talked about last time, the standards, we designed for the 100-year event. It is a 1% probability of that type of storm occurring in any given year. It is not a frequency, it is a probability. So even though it says 1% chance, it's not that it occurs every 100 years. It could occur twice in a year, which it has. It has occurred three times in a year. We must do our work in an easement. We cannot relocate, and that's the other part of this. We cannot locate a problem on somebody to somebody else. We have to make sure that we have the ability to go in and fix that problem without absolutely affecting someone else downstream, which is difficult to do. From a cost perspective, we just can't go out there and spend dollars right and left. It has to base, be based on a cost benefit. It has to pay for itself in two storm events. And we do not pay for easements on property that is affected. And we went over that. There are the current projects we're looking at, and we are working on, not only looking at, but working on, 15 buyouts. There's a drainage system in Oral Drive that we are implementing at this point in time through a bidding process. The Waddell Basin, we've cleaned that out. We're looking at putting a grate over the inlet. We're looking at Elevating Park Avenue. We are looking at the Glass Avenue Basin. There's a basin that runs along Glass Avenue that hasn't been maintained for a while. We're looking at getting that thing cleared out. Why is that important? Because that has, that's where we dump the water from Evergreen Park area, is in this particular basin. We're looking at cleaning out the Windsor Drive, Deepwood Ditch. We finished up Bahama Drive. The fence on our Hop Town Middle School detention basin needs repair because of, of trees. We are also looking at log jam removal along the jail, Don and Drive, Gibbons addition. And then again, dam maintenance. On the back portion of that, this is in here for, these are properties along the North Fork that we're looking at and are, are have bought out. Everything in green is part of the current buyout program. The items in white have already been bought out. And then the blue items are areas that we have not addressed at this particular point in time. And you have that on the next page, which I think is pretty impactful. This is a South Fork. Everything in white we've bought out. And we're looking at these other areas as part of our local buyout program. So, and we go some, some pictures, I believe. All right, this is a log dam we recently took out. You can see the tree on the far end. That was, that was the size of the tree that we took out. If you notice the guy in the orange shirt down there trying to break up some of the other debris in that particular development. This is Laramore Bridge. This is the notorious bridge that's south of town. And if you don't want, keep the logs out of that, it causes water back up in the city. And this is what, after we get it cleaned out. This usually runs us about $10,000 to $11,000 a shot. Now, this is, looks like a ditch, but this is part of the emergency spillway on Fly that got blown out. This is all, the erosion you see was all material that had been blown out in April as a result of this. This is what we have to go in and fix, per the state requirements. Go ahead. Tandy, this made it on Facebook, that the area there, that's the auxiliary emergency spillway that was blown out during that rain as well. It has to be repaired. And then finally, the state keeps on telling us that they cannot rate our dams any higher without a geotechnical stability analysis. We have paid contractors to get out there to drill that. We're waiting for the results of that particular study. But we feel like our dams are pretty stable. But that's around a $70,000 bill that we're, we're getting ready to pay. And then we showed you the high-flow cover that we felt has been extremely effective on the South Fork and reducing that flooding in that area. So, and then that's, and that's what looks like in this drive. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have pertaining to what we're doing, how we're doing it, and why.
Questions for Steve?
I'll ask, Steve, I don't mind. Uh, real quick, who currently monitors the ditches and creeks and everything?
When you say, when you say monitor, what do you mean?
The preventative side, the, the drainage system as far as, is there, is there any kind of?
No, there's not, that, that's what I'm talking about. They're on private property. Most of these things meander, they're on private property. So you really think, and like I said, the river, a lot of people don't realize this, but your property lines run down the middle of the river. So when you're dealing with a log jam or whatever, you have, you really get both property owners involved in it. But what you're talking about, these creeks could be totally on one property owner, but basically they are totally on private property.
But in a, hold on, in a case where if that's being neglected, I understand it's on a private property, but that impact of what it causes comes on public property.
Yes.
Right? So we need to figure out a way, maybe?
And that's why I said about enforcement, enforcement.
Clayton, Chuck touched on that just a little bit about the ditches around town and the waterways around town. They've, they've kind of fallen through the cracks in terms of high maintenance.
Yes, sir, and that's what I'm trying to?
The maintenance that they really need to function at 100% is not there today.
I guess that's what I'm asking, sir.
It's not there today.
How do we get there?
It is the responsibility technically of the homeowner to keep it clean. But if you went around and asked the homeowners if they're responsible for it, they would probably say they don't know a thing about it, or no, I'm not. Or, uh, so there, there is a regulatory requirement that they keep it clean. But it's not been enforced, and we haven't cleaned it up either.
Okay, so from the city perspective, I mean, maybe that's something that we need to look at, maybe our code enforcement, or maybe we need to have someone added to do that kind of thing. That's where I'm trying to get with the first part of that question.
Well, and, and what you get into is, if we go in and do it, we, I'm gonna say this, that we own it. I mean, we'll continue to keep it clean and what, and you're not talking about a small cost. So you're really putting a, a heavy lift on that adjoining property owner to keep it clean. So those are?
It does compromise our system.
Right, well, it's, it's, it's part of the whole problem, if you will. So it's just, I know it's a small piece, but my next question?
Well, it's a significant piece, though.
Right, but that we're not currently doing effectively. And, and I think that's what I'm trying to point out is, there are areas that you talked about, and this was one of them, that we can really try to come up with a way to have an impact on, to help alleviate some of the, I know we can't, we're not going to be God, Mother Nature. We're, we're not. I think everybody understands that. But I think that knowing that, that there are things like that, and then having us, giving us the ability to figure out if it's a funding thing, that needs to be put on us, not you. I, I, I know you take it to heart because you're wanting to find the funding and everything, but at the same time, we're getting our teeth kicked in by constituents. Put that on us, put that burden on me. Let me know that this is the cost to get this done. Let me sit up here and debate with the council, figure out where we could help get that funding, I think would be helpful.
And that's, and that's the reason why we put in there about getting an engineer to look at this and give some idea of what we're talking about dollar-wise.
I think that'd be great. The second question, and it may be part of the same problem. You mentioned, and I never thought about it, you just said it a minute ago. The North Drive Basin, and you said basically it had been neglected for some time. How does that happen? Is it just not enough?
Funding.
Funding, okay.
Yeah, it's funding.
Because how do we keep that from happening at all of our basins?
Well, right now, the ones that we, you see black chain link fences around, those are ours, and we maintain those.
Okay.
And after a big rainfall event, we go out and check the discharge facility, structure, make sure it's not blocked and all that good stuff. But on this particular one, that, that basin was built back in the, I think, the late 80s, early 90s as part of some of the Boxwood, Westwood issues, when we diverted the water. So anyway, that needs, needs to be cleaned out. I talked to Mike about that. He recognizes that we need to do that, and we're getting a contractor in there to give us a quote to clean that out. And I think it's probably going to be around a $25,000 to $35,000 deal to go in there because you've got saplings growing up in it and stuff like that.
But will that, that become one of our, one of yours, the black chain link?
We're not going to let it grow back up, if that's what you're asking.
That's kind of where I'm getting at, yeah. Because I, I never thought about it till you said that, then it made me start thinking about all the other basins. How do we ensure that that's not happening? Because we saw with the North Drive the last couple of incidents.
There, there, our basin system, 12 of them, is a critical part of, of the system, system, the big system. And, and it's, it's played a critical role in especially localized flooding, i.e. other than river flooding. And it's assisted with river flooding because it holds water back from going in the river. It keeps the river down. So it's a critical, critical piece. It's getting old. It's going to need more maintenance in the future, now and in the future than it has. We've been building it historically. Now it's time to maintain it better and keep it in the best shape we know how.
Yes, and the last thing I'll ask off of your, your talk here, because it did help me. It was insightful for some things. But you talked about the spillways break-in or whatever before, and the cost that was associated with that.
Right.
Quite significant, I think. Is that not something that we're able, or are we able to have insured?
No.
Is that something that?
I, I asked, they would not insure those.
No, I didn't think about it till you said it, I was like?
No, no, I, I, we had, that was the first thing I did, and they said, no. No, what insurance we, they will not insure the structure. What we have insurance on is if they breach what it, what it does downstream. And that's going to be enough, I'll tell you that right now, so anyway.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Steve?
Yes, Mr. Born, could you elaborate on the, from the engineers that came a couple of weeks ago? Well, no, what was the outcome of that? How, how did that go?
When you say, when you talk about?
The engineers that came, we all went around the town looking, uh, this is your house, yeah.
No, they're, they're, they were looking at the, the facilities in that neighborhood, in that area. So is there a report yet? No, there's not. And I, I, good question from this perspective. When we look at these things, it's a, it's not, and a lot of these things are not an easy fix. And, and we fix, again, I go back to, we address the water issues there, where's that water issue, water go? It goes across the community college. It goes to the baseball field at Hop Town, or at Christian County, and goes to the bus garage. And it goes to the basin where we have. So all we're doing is, you're stacking it from one place to another. And that's the reason why we're looking at a lot of that basin on, uh, North Drive. So no, to answer your question, we have not gotten to the point where we have a solution for that particular area.
Part of the answer to that is that when we hire these engineers to do a job like that, very defined, you know, pretty specific thing here, we expect them not just to tell us what happened, we expect them to come back with a solution. So sometimes it takes longer than we want it to, to get a real solution to the problem and address it. We don't need to pay them money to tell us what happened. We already know what happened, and it's not okay. So that's one reason it takes longer than you want it to. It's still, it's never fast enough, and we know it.
Mr. Born, on, I've received a few multiple calls from the area. You have kind of stated that the North Drive Basin has been neglected, which could explain a lot of the North Drive, Glass Avenue, baseball field, that area.
Let me stop you, that does not, because that's downstream. Everything that affected that was all upstream. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, you've kind of, it was all in the same, when you were talking, so I paired it all together, I'm sorry. Um, but if you were to spend the money to clean it, what is your, what is your plan going forward to maintain? Obviously, any basin would be a critical piece.
It is, it'll be put on the list. If we're going to spend this much money to clean that back out, get it back to the point where it is still functional, we're going to maintain it, we're going to mow it just like we do all of them.
So why haven't we been doing that?
That wasn't part of the responsibility of the utility.
Okay.
All right. What we're saying is, there's an asset there that we want to put back into a functioning portion of our system.
Okay.
Who, whose responsibility is it?
Also, on the event of June 28th, I had a constituent reach out and say she, she lives on North Drive, and sewer water backed up into her house. How would all of, I do not understand all of this. So this one was, it threw me for a loop. She actually called me today, so this is, is something new. How does that amount of rain result in sewage back up into somebody's house?
The sewer line has breaks or areas where water, groundwater seeps into it. And at some point in time, there's so much groundwater that forces the water back up through the existing pipes. It's called infilling and flow. And that happens quite a bit around here. When you see manholes and stuff coming up out of manholes, that's because the actual system is not closed, and water seeps into it, forcing water up through the manholes. And that's, that's that situation.
Sewer system flooded too, basically.
We have that same problem over on Windsor Drive that me and Chuck and Derek have tackled out.
HWA deals with those problems. When they know there's seepage, they have some tools they can use. And I'm not saying it'll work on that one. But we, we've worked jointly on certain areas that we were working on the stormwater part, and they were working on the seepage. Uh, so there, there is, there are potential answers out there, hopefully. Especially if it's nasty like that.
Felt that was pretty nasty.
Pretty nasty.
Oh, it's horrible.
It's terrible.
Like it's, yeah, and, and she said her, her neighbor, he, he didn't reach out, but her neighbor had the same issue. So, and they were both on North Drive, um, across from the Baptist Association. Uh, my last question is, um, so have we, or how are we going to kind of? A good system has a checklist. If you're maintaining it, it has a checklist, you have a map, you have a way of looking at things. How are we going to go about making that happen?
I think we have to develop it beyond where it is today. And that goes for stormwater drains, to what's under the ground, to all the basins we have, just more of a comprehensive maintenance list. They're getting maintenance, but it's not as tight maybe as it could or should be. So we know how to do that.
Well, and I think the way I look at it is, if you have that, if you have that checklist that shows that you've been proactive, then you're showing, you've, you have a paper trail. You know, and that's not just to protect the city, but to also protect you, and also for the peace of mind for the citizens, to know that these kinds of things are being tracked and maintained effectively on a regular basis.
We have, well, we have mowing contracts for all of our basins. We have mowing contracts where they're out there mowing them every, uh, two weeks. The lots that we, we have, we mow every, every two weeks. So that's on, on the routine maintenance process. We'll continue to maintain these like we do. The other things you're talking about, sometimes we just need to have a heads up if there's something that looks like it's being eroded, or, uh, it's not functioning right. You need to let us know, we go out and take a look at it and, and do the best we can to try to address those issues. So right now, if you're asking me, do we know where everything's at? Pretty close, but do we go around and check them? No, we do not. I mean, it's, it's, that would be almost a physical impossibility. But what we're looking at and what we're trying to address here is maybe a more comprehensive engineering approach to all this stuff so that we can put them on the list like you're talking about, and maybe address it more, especially if they have a specific impact to the drainage system. Some do not. So there, this is like everything else. Some, some aspects of a system are more important than others. So we want to make sure we address the ones, because we don't have enough money to do everything else that you wanted to do. So we want to make sure we address the ones because we don't have enough money to do everything else that you wanted to do.
So this amount of rain, we've never had this kind of rain in the first six months of a year. Is that correct?
No, I, I think the thing that I saw was we're already, already at our yearly average right now. So.
Yeah, so this is a brand new problem. And we're just now, not that we're not react, being proactive, but this is, this is fresh. This is brand new. So we're.
And, and, and what normally happens, Travis, is you have one of these bills and you're able to catch up.
Yeah.
We've had three of them and, and you just don't, you can't respond.
Right. As Mike said, we are at sixty inches already this year and only halfway through the year. And we usually only have about fifty for the year. So, you know, we're way ahead already. And we know we have some issues. You know, me and Mike have talked about it. Me and you've talked about it, Steve. You know, where we go, how we go, you know, and we've got to figure out which way we're going to go. But we need these checklists. It's like Randy says, we need to say this is what we're doing, where we're going, how we're going, which me, you and Bill have talked about on that the other day. So, you know.
And I will say, I'll tell you this, it's an open invitation to all of you. If you have an issue, you have a concern, you want to sit down and talk. We'll go out and look at sites. We'll not turn anybody down. We'll go out and look at this stuff and see what's going on.
We know that y'all are hearing from all the people. We hear from a lot of them. We don't hear from near as many as y'all do. So it's somehow or another, we need to get the communication between you as council members and us at Stormwater improved routinely improved, not once a year or not, you know, when something goes wrong. But some quarterly meeting or something, some conduit of this information that we know what you're hearing so that we can get on it and take action on it and sort out. We have to sort out what's most important and what's not. So, uh, it really could help us a lot with that. And, and.
I just want to ask the question. You say reach out. So like, what if a citizen reach out? What's the protocol of following back up? Because I know over on Singletree, they've had, they called me a couple of times and it looks like I'm not getting back with them and so.
Well, we've been over Singletree. I know there's a ditch that runs down and we mow that ditch. I mean, that's one of the things that we do and we filled in two sinkholes over there on that ditch. So we've been out there, but if there's something else that we're missing, we'll go back out there. Okay?
I mean, they're just saying to me that they're not getting the call back. So I'm saying what's the?
It's not like we are mowing that ditch from.
I'm not saying I'm not mowing it. I'm saying what's the protocol to follow back up if they complain, if they said no one reached back out.
Well, that's not, that's bad on our part. We'll, I'll make sure we communicate with her and we'll see what's, what actually is taking place. Okay?
You all need to build a relationship with the residents in this community as well. You need to educate the community about what you all do and how it operates and how service stormwater operates.
And we've talked about that a lot lately, uh, including our own Facebook page. We don't use social media. That's ridiculous, you know, in this time, time to not participate in that. People, we don't tell, we don't talk. We don't, people don't know what we do. Y'all don't know a lot about what we do. Uh, and that's not good. So we've got the responsibility to communicate at a higher level. But it, it also, I think, brings, brings the responsibility to all of us to be sure we're on the same page at all times. Uh, doesn't mean we'll agree, but nothing's going to fall through the cracks if we can get the communication straight.
Mr. Born, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Doc.
Okay, I, I just wanted to say that, you know, the events of February and April and June are, you know, unique and they're, they're new. We realize that. And, um, you know, when, when residents call us and ask, you know, is the city supporting you? Yes, we are. And we have a budgetary item and, uh, I know the frustration of our city staff that, uh, in our budgetary information that is handed, that was given to us, your budget was not in that, was not submitted in a timely manner so it could be presented to us for us to study. We didn't see it until you actually made your first presentation. So I might request that you all use a little more transparency and make sure that you get those budgetary reports in in a timely manner so that it can be put into our packets. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Born, um, I, I, I love the presentation, the breakdown, but I'm not seeing nothing about the fake drains. I had brought that up on our last city council meeting about the fake drains throughout the city. And, uh, I was hoping for a phone call, but I know I scheduled a meeting which I had to cancel. But from that time, have you came up with anything? Because I'm not seeing it here. And we got a lot of constituents pace on water on their bill, but we got fake drains through the city. How, how are we going to address that? How do I get back with them and let them know, hey, this is what's going on. This is what we're going to do?
We'll get with Mike and work with Mike to get those done. Okay?
There's, there's one thing on our new, in that area, is that is we are going to deploy this underground camera system and track down these drains to find out where their dead ends are. A lot of it, we don't know. Some of it's older than me and it needs to be replaced. Some of it never was built right. Uh, you've got everything from dead ends to dilapidated and everything in between. So we're going to spend a lot of money figuring out the, the shape, the operating condition of the underground system. It'll be an ongoing, long-term project. But it, it's part of our core infrastructure and it needs attention. It's not going to get any better if we don't get after it. So I hope that we'll see, that get that on the action list that we're after the drains that are, you call them fake dead ends, whatever you want to call them.
Yeah.
We got some. And that's kind of in Mike's category, but when it goes into the true infrastructure, it jumps over into our category and into the capital spending side, uh, of, of what it takes to fix them. I don't know if that halfway answers your question or not.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I take your word for it. We're working together as a team. I, I love that we talking about it now. Like Travis said, it's something new. But I love that we bringing this up and we talking about it because that's what we need to do. And then we need to just come to a, a resolution on how we're going to do things.
Well, we got them and we're, we're going to get after them.
Just get after it. Let's go.
I'm done. I just want to reiterate something real quick. First, Steve, thank you. I told you all when I met with you, I don't have any idea how to deal with it. You are the experts. Mr. Born, you know, I believe that you're probably one of the most intelligent people I've ever sat and talked to. And I've told you that before. But sitting here tonight, it, it just, hearing, hearing the fake drain part hits me again. I haven't heard that story till tonight, but obviously it's a thing to some degree. But then hearing about the basin that we had here that's untouched and, and I don't want anybody to think what I'm about to say is this mayor's responsibility because I've been under four mayors and I don't remember ever seeing anybody clean up that basin on North Drive. So I don't want nobody to think right now that that's his, his failing since he's been here. So, Mayor, that's not what I'm saying. But those two things are things that add to the problem. The problem with the ditches not being checked, cleaned, cleared out, whether that's either we can't get on property or we don't have a mindset from a code enforcement world to include that as part of what we need to. All comes back to me as one clear thing is maybe that is, there is a need for somebody to do this type of job, whether it's on your staff or, or, or on code staff or Mike's staff or whatever. But these are three things that I never thought of until tonight, hearing this conversation. And if you're telling me, uh, Mr. Niggle, that, that each of these things play a significant role in the overall problem.
They do.
These things, this seems like something that we could start putting into motion. You know, a plan could probably be devised quicker than you can have engineers come in and develop a whole new system. I just.
Well, I think we can clean out some weeds without any engineer.
So can we create a?
Yeah, I understand that. But also, when you start cleaning this stuff out a little bit, it changes the drainage patterns all over. So you need to make sure where that water's going to and how fast it's getting there. Right now, it acts as a slowdown or a dissipation type of situation where it slows that water down. When we start cleaning them out, it's going to get somewhere else quicker and there are going to be more impacts. So that's the reason why we're talking about an engineer. I realize we don't need having an engineer tell us about ten tree down, but you need to have some idea of how much that's going to cost.
Create a job for it.
Pardon me?
We should still create a job for it. Right, can we do that?
But hold on, but I would think that when they initially designed the city the way it did, that the engineer was brought in to help design. We just dug ditches?
Maybe we did. Really, we didn't worry about stormwater drainage in this community till about the late seventies. And we had a tremendous flood in the seventies. That's when you adopted two ordinances, the Stormwater Management Ordinance and the Flood Safety and Control or FEMA's Flood Control Ordinance. Those two ordinances, when they were in place, that's when you started, we started worrying about how water got from point A down to point C. And all these other areas, to the great extent, are pre nineteen seventy-seven subdivisions. And that's the reason why we would go back and retrofit stuff or you go back and look at ditches. That's the reason why all this stuff makes, you have to put all that stuff together in terms of how to impact somebody downstream.
I think it's just important that, you know, the events that we've had recently, at least has caused us to face these things squarely. And it's important for us to be able to know how to make a plan and use our resources in a way to try to respond to the needs.
You know, well, just if we clean out the North Drive basin right there, we're going to dump more water in the Rose Drive automatically a whole lot quicker. And right there over off the river, right there on, there off of North Drive behind Arby's when we clean that out. You know, we're going to change, so I'm with Steve and him on how we got to keep this thing at a pace, keeping it right. You know, just like we go over to behind the armory right there and that storm basin, how we got to slow it down some to keep it from coming off hitting Evergreen so fast. Because Lord, every time we get a rain here lately, Evergreen parking lot's got three foot of water standing in the middle of Evergreen Park. We have to figure a way to make it better. I agree with you. We need to figure out and get some of this cleaned up that we put off, you know. I, Mike knows I've asked about that basin. He's told me that we were going to bid it out. I asked about this after the, uh, April rain. But there again, I've got a foot of water standing in it right now and I can't get in it to even grind it out and clean it out. We're standing in water. Uh, you know, we looked over behind the bus garage today, coming up from behind Rough Park, I did. I've got two foot of water in that creek right now, standing in that creek. It hasn't went anywhere. And it probably going to rain again tonight or in the morning. I know it's going to rain this weekend. I was going to do is plan to do something, you know. We've got rain. We have water issues. We are going to push forward on how it's going to be. I appreciate each and every one of these phone calls. I do. That tells me where we're going. It tells me that you're working on it. You're looking at it. You know, I understand her grief. You know, we used to have a shop on Walnut Street, South Walnut flooded every time. They come up behind, off of Flynn Enterprises there by the, uh, relay for a lot, not relay, but, uh, Habitat for Humanity building. It used to flood. We had to put a wall up just so it wouldn't roll in the door. I know where she's at. I understand. Nobody likes sweeping muddy water out and sewage out because it used to back up the drain and bubble up. You know, we spent many a days doing that. So council, keep speaking, keep talking, keep talking to your constituents. We need to keep moving forward. Travis.
I'll just say, just remember, there's, we can do all that we're talking about right now, but if it rains four inches in thirty minutes.
Right.
There's nothing we can do. There's nothing we can do to prepare for that. So.
Right. But we will work on it. We are not going to just let it fall on deaf ears. I'm not going to let it fall on deaf ears. We're going to push forward on these drainage issues. You know, I got a bunch of pictures from Brittany. He's on, she showed them to me. Appreciate it. You know, we have pictures all over there. I got pictures over there off of, of Talbot Drive where the water's been in the basement that we've never seen before, but we have it now.
You know.
I agree. We can't stop it, but we can make a plan to respond.
Right.
And we can update what we already have in place.
Yes.
I think my main concern in all of this is can we avoid a death? Can we avoid a drowning? Because nationwide, worldwide even, weather patterns have changed. And this year, the entire world is seeing flooding like they haven't before. So stay ahead of the game before we have death on our hands. I don't want to see somebody's kid or somebody driving their car stall out. You know, a gentleman today was pulled out of his car in, in floodwater and thank God he was okay. But I don't, that, any situation like that could be devastating. And if we can stay ahead of the game and make small changes over time to accommodate the changing weather, then we can likely save a life. But I don't want to see anybody in this town lose a loved one, not to floodwater, not to something that we could be pro, more, I'm not saying we're not proactive, but be maybe a little more proactive. But if funding is an issue, bring it to us. Because that's what I've heard consistently is funding is an issue. If it's an issue, bring it to us. The safety of our constituents, that's top priority for me.
And that's one of the things we want to do is, is show you what that price tag is. I mean, you all make that decision.
We haven't been doing that and we can, and we will tackle some of these big ones, if you would.
If you change the standard, you want to increase the standard, then we'll tell you what that cost is going to be and you make that determination.
Mayor, I'd like to, uh, one, one thing last and not least is introduce our board.
Yes, sir.
We got Diane Crony Turner and Dave Fernandez and Kelly Wartman and Travis. Our board, between all of us, we got over fifty years' experience in dealing with flood management in Hopkinsville. Not counting our private work outside of government. So we got a lot of experience on this board and we got a lot of dedicated hours going into what it takes to make the system work. Not perfect. We've got plenty of ways to improve, but we're doing our very best to be sure we're serving the people of Hopkinsville. Any of you have complaints, suggestions? We need, need to hear it. Need to hear it more often. And, uh, we need to get together more often and walk through what we're doing and what we need to do.
Well, we will start having you back here on a quarterly basis to talk to us and bring us back up to date. And if, if we need to, we'll bring you back sooner.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Thank you all. Thank you for what you do, for serving.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, Melissa Clayton, it looks like you're up for finances.
All right, so let's jump into June's finances. Um, we'll start with the interfund transfers. We had three interfund transfers during the month of June. Um, fifteen hundred dollars to the Western Kentucky State Fair, um, for, to be a sponsor. Six thousand went to, um, Southwestern Kentucky Economic Development Council for the Winter Circle. And four thousand six eighty-one went to the Hop Town Hoppers for a bus repair. That brought our total interfunds for the year to twelve thousand one eighty-one, making our year-to-date interfund transfers a hundred thousand dollars. And there was nothing left in the interfund at the end of the year. Payroll tax revenue for the year, um, came in at twenty-two million, um, five thirty-two, four seventy. That's equivalent payroll. Well, you guys can see it there. An increase of six points, um, sixteen percent. Property tax revenue for the year came in at five million, six oh three, eight ninety-two, which is ninety-seven percent of what we budgeted. Insurance premium tax came in at seven million, four fifty-four, two seventy-six. Um, and that's an increase in equivalent premiums of twelve point six seven percent for the year. Our business licenses came in at three million, seven eighty-six, eight thirty-nine, um, which was still over what we had projected in our budget. We do expect they are still coming in for the year because of the, um, tax deadline that got moved to November. So we're still getting business licenses every day. So we'll talk about our general fund. We started the year with three forty-eight, three twenty-eight in prior year encumbrances. Um, we collected year-to-date revenue of fifty-five million, eight fifty-seven, seven seventy-two. Um, we collected year-to-date revenue of fifty-five million eight fifty-seven, seven seventy-two. We had actual year-to-date expenses of fifty-five million two oh six oh sixty-nine. Um, so we did have a positive one million thirty-one dollars in revenue over expenses. When we subtract out the encumbrances we had on June thirtieth, that gave us our revenue over expenses and encumbrances of six eighty-two, one twenty-seven for the year. Our financial policy outlines what happens to that revenue over encumbrance at the end of the year. Anytime we have more revenue than we have expenses, fifty percent of that goes into the Capital Equipment Replacement Reserve. Ten percent of that goes into the Economic Development Reserve. Ten percent goes into our Building Maintenance Reserve, and five percent goes over into our Health Trust. We will make these adjustments in the First Quarter Budget Amendment of 2025. So when we do the first operational budget amendment, these, um, transfers will happen. Yes. Yes. Um, so there's our revenue over expenses and encumbrance, six eighty-two. So three forty-one oh sixty-four is going to go into the Capital Equipment Replacement Reserve. Sixty-eight thousand two thirteen will go over into Economic Development. Sixty-eight thousand two thirteen is going to go into our Building Maintenance. And thirty-four thousand one oh six will go into the Health Trust. That leaves twenty-five percent that stays in the general fund as a reserve, so one seventy-five thirty-one at the end of the year. So when you look at our fund balance comparison of June of twenty-four and June of twenty-five, we did not have nearly the revenue over expenses that we had last year. Um, I still think it was a great year, though. Um, anytime we come out more revenue than you have expenses, I, I take it as a win. Our municipal road aid, um, we had prior year encumbrances to start the year of thirty-seven thousand two dollars. We collected year-to-date revenue and MRA of nine hundred sixty-nine thousand oh thirty-two. Our actual expenses year-to-date were eight hundred ninety-two thousand four ninety-nine, giving us a positive revenue over expenses of one thirteen, five thirty-five. We did have encumbrances of three fifty-three, five thirty-five at the end of the year. Um, so we had more expenses and encumbrances than we had revenue in the MRA fund. And that's partly due to, we budgeted some prior year revenue in MRA this fiscal year. Our capital fund, we had, um, three hundred forty-eight, three twenty-eight in encumbrances when we started the year. We collected in the capital fund a total of three million seven fourteen nine oh five. We had actual expenses of three million, um, fourteen thousand one thirty-six. So we also had more revenue in our capital fund than we had expenses. We didn't encumber a lot of that, um, to come into this year. Nine sixty-seven, eight sixty-three is our encumbrances in the capital fund at the end of the year. So we still ended with a positive in the capital fund of eighty-one thousand two thirty-four. Our departmental expenses, everybody came in under budget, so that's always good. Admin came in at ninety-four point two percent. Tax Department came in at eighty-five percent. Information Technology came in at ninety-two point three, and Legislative came in at ninety-nine point eight. In our Public Safety, Police Department came in at ninety-eight point five. ECC came in at ninety-eight point two. The Fire Department came in at ninety-seven point five. EMS came in at ninety-eight percent, and Fire Prevention came in at ninety-four point eight. In Public Works, Public Works Admin came in at ninety-three point three. City Maintenance was at ninety-three percent. Our Fort Campbell contracts came in at fifty-eight point three percent. Service Center came in at ninety-six point seven. Parks and Rec was at eighty-eight point four. The Sportsplex was at eighty-eight, eighty-three point eight. And the Aquatic Center barely made it at ninety-nine point nine percent for the year. Um, so total general fund expenses, we had budgeted through all of our budget amendments, fifty-eight million five twenty-eight eighty-seven. We had year-to-date expenses of fifty-five million two oh six oh sixty-nine. So we spent ninety-four point three percent of our budgeted funds, um, during fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, Municipal Road Aid, the budget was one million two forty-six oh thirty-four, and we spent eight ninety-two, four ninety-nine. So that's seventy-one point six percent of budget. And then the Capital Fund, we had budgeted four million one hundred fourteen thousand four fifty-nine, and we spent three million fourteen thousand one thirty-six. So our cash fund balance, we started the year with seventeen million six seventeen, four twenty-five. We collected our year-to-date revenue again of fifty-five million eight fifty-seven, seventy, seven seventy-two. Um, we, we spent fifty-five million two oh six oh sixty-nine. So our cash balance on June thirtieth was eighteen million two sixty-nine, one twenty-eight. We did have three hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred four dollars in encumbrances to end the year. So that gave us our available cash on June thirtieth, seventeen million nine fifty-one, two twenty-four. When you take our available cash, you subtract out our two reserves. Um, you have an unassigned cash fund balance on June thirtieth of sixteen million six eighty-five, four fourteen. And that is thirty-eight point two percent of our operating budget. So when we compare that to June of 2024, you can see our revenue, um, was a little bit more than last year. Our expenses were a little bit more than last year, and our unassigned, um, cash fund balance is also a little bit more percentage-wise than what we had last year. Our investment is doing well. We, um, put one million two oh one nine ninety-four in December. Year-to-date interest, so far, we've collected sixteen thousand one nineteen, and we've had one dollar in our actual realized loss. So our current fund balance, June thirtieth, was one million two eighteen, one hundred and twelve dollars. And if we had sold everything on June thirtieth, we would have collected one million two fifty-two, oh ninety-eight. I'm happy to answer any questions about the monthly financial report.
Any questions?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we get to go to the TIF report.
All right, it's required that I report to you guys on our annual TIF, um, account. So we have three current active TIFs, and the first one is the How McCoy TIF. We had total collections of twelve thousand one hundred and five dollars. Um, we rebated back to the developer, nine thousand six thirty-nine, and we retained by the city, two thousand four sixty-six. Also put in the report the day that these TIFs will end, so, um, we're getting closer to them ending.
Thank you.
Um, the Drew McCoy TIF is the second one, total collections twenty-two thousand four thirty-eight. This is all property taxes, so a hundred percent of that went back to the developer. And, um, there's no payroll currently in this TIF. And our last one is the Convention Center, total collections thirty-four thousand seven thirteen. We rebated back to the developer, twenty-four thousand oh twenty-six, and we retained ten thousand six eighty-seven. So the fund balance in the TIF, TIF account started July one of 2024, we had eighty-three thousand forty-eight. We had total TIF collections, sixty-nine thousand two fifty-five. Um, we got interest in that account of four thousand six hundred fifty dollars, and we rebated back out of that to the developers, fifty-six thousand one oh two, leaving a fund balance, June thirtieth, of one hundred thousand eight hundred and fifty-one dollars. Happy to answer any questions about our TIF account, if you guys have them?
Any questions from Melissa on the TIF account?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
All righty, uh, item nine, approval of minutes for July first, 2025 Regular Meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion, second, Travis and Randy? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item ten, Ordinance nineteen dash twenty twenty-five, Edmonds and Stites, MLK South Property, First Reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Zone thirty acres of property located on the south side of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way. Whereas Community and Development Services initiated a zoning map amendment by Resolution twenty-five dash zero three to assign the original zoning designations of B four arterial commercial district to property located on the south side of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way. And whereas Community and Development Services made a favorable recommendation at their June twenty-three, twenty twenty-five meeting for City Council to approve original zoning application, R twenty-five dash six dash one. And whereas City Council concurs, said recommendation is in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting zoning. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, pursuant to KRS one hundred point two one one, Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services Recommendation dated June twenty-three, twenty twenty-five, a thirty acre portion of property, PBA parcel one two two dash zero 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 one five point zero nine, owned by Edmonds and Stites in care of William F. Edmonds, located on the south side of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way approximately five hundred and fifty-three feet east of the intersection of Fort Campbell Boulevard and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way. As further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein, is hereby zoned to be for arterial commercial district. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
Motion?
Second.
Motion, the second with none. Any discussion? Okay, I call the clerk to call the row.
Councilmember Sumner? Councilmember Meek? Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Droul?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All righty, Ordinance twenty dash twenty twenty-five, Edmond and Stites, MLK North Property, First Reading.
Amending the zoning maps of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky. Zone property located on the north side of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way. Whereas Community and Development Services initiated a zoning map amendment by Resolution twenty-five dash zero four to assign the original zoning designations of B four arterial commercial district and AT one agricultural transitional district to property owned by Edmonds and Stites in care of William F. Edmonds, which is located on the north side of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way. And whereas Community and Development Services made a favorable recommendation at their June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five meeting for City Council to approve original zoning application, R twenty-five dash six dash two. And whereas City Council concurs, said recommendations are in agreement with the Hopkinsville Christian County Comprehensive Plan and significant physical, social, and economic changes have occurred warranting the signings. Whereas therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Hopkinsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, pursuant to KRS one hundred point two one one, Hopkinsville Code of Ordinances and Community and Development Services Recommendation dated June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, a twenty-three point four eight acre portion of property, PBA parcel one two two dash zero 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 one five point zero zero, located on the north side of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way approximately one thousand one hundred eighty-seven feet east of the intersection of Fort Campbell Boulevard and Dr. Martin Luther King Way. As further described on Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein, is hereby zoned to be for arterial commercial district and a ninety, and a one ninety point five three acre portion of property, PBA parcel one two two dash zero 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 one five point zero zero, located on the north side of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way approximately one thousand one hundred eighty-seven feet east of the intersection of Fort Campbell Boulevard and Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Way, immediately north of the twenty-three point four eight acre portion of property being zoned to be for, as further described on Exhibit A here, attached here to and incorporated herein, is hereby zoned AT one agricultural transitional district. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section four, this section shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law.
No move.
Yes, sir. Yeah, he's right there.
Sorry, it's almost like a natural basin? So changing this, is that going to?
Very much so, and that was considered as part of the zoning. Currently, the property is unzoned, so there is no restriction on use. The portion of the floodplain, the B four section, goes back to the floodplain but does not extend into the floodplain. The floodplain portion is zoned or to be zoned AT one, which is a lower-density agricultural type of district, which limits the intensity of that portion if it were ever to develop. So yes, sir, that was a factor of consideration, that's why that line is there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Tom? Call the clerk to call the row.
Councilmember Sumner?
Yes.
Councilmember Meek?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogard?
Yes.
Councilmember Velez?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
Councilmember Droul?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Stallins?
Yes.
Councilmember Marsh?
Yes.
Councilmember Crabtree?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All righty, we have item eleven, a municipal order, thirty-one dash twenty, twenty-five surplus properties for the Public Works.
And I'm going to read this as corrected. Whereas the attached listed vehicles were purchased for use by the Public Works Department and Information Technology Department. And whereas said vehicles are in need of repair exceeding current value and/or of no value to the city in delivering public services. Now therefore be it ordered, Hopkinsville City Council hereby declares the vehicles on the attached list surplus property and authorizes the mayor to dispose of said vehicles by methods available in KRS eighty-two point eight three.
Motion. Motion by Travis, second by Seth. All righty, any discussion over this? All righty, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed likewise? Okay, that moving forward. Item twelve, other, any other business we need to discuss tonight? All righty, no other business, I'll move into item thirteen, Councilman Comments. Floor is open.
If no one else has a comment, I'll go ahead and speak. Uh, I, I just wanted to say, I heard the discussion earlier about, uh, consideration being given, or some council members being, considering, uh, taking responsibilities for HHSU, putting those over to Public Works. I just wanted to say that I've not been contacted or discussed responsibilities of the stormwater, uh, utility being transferred to Public Works. And, um, you know, I just wanted to make that for the record. The second thing is, um, I got the, and read the Administrator's Report for the month, and thank you for sending those out. I just wanted to give kudos to, uh, Toby and Mike, uh, on the, I, I read about, uh, Bluegrass Splash. Uh, they've had nearly five hundred people per day at Bluegrass Splash. And just some of the other things that are going on in this city, it's like so many departments and things that are going on. But I just wanted to give them a shout out, you know, we had such struggle getting that place repaired properly and operating and all. And, uh, so, yeah, I just wanted, you know, when somebody does something right, I just wanted to, wanted to give them, you know, a shout out. Really appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Any other comments?
When I say five hundred people, that's five hundred people per day.
Correct.
So that's great.
Is a lot. All righty, I will move into item fourteen, Ward one, Councilman Smith, would you give us an adjournment, sir?
Yes, sir. Since this is the Independence Month, I'll read, "Independence means little without unity." I repeat, "Independence means little without unity, progress, and service." As we celebrate this month, may we have also renewed our commitment to serve our neighbors and strengthen our community.
Having a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Got a second by Travis, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.